Performance, condition of appointment of public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee town manager's annual evaluation motion. So can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to enter closed session.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, we'll return to open session. Can I get someone to close closed session?
Motion to close closed session.
All in favor? Unanimous. Todd's not here, but I'm sure he would do that. Also adjourn special meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn the special meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. I'll wait till Todd gets back before we get started. I'm good. All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 meeting. Everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Brings us to welcome an upcoming events. We've got a couple of events, a couple of big events coming up. On December 1st, we have Winter Fest. Love winter season. We'll have free hot chocolate, sledding photos with Santa, and our annual tree lighting. And this all takes place in, where's Hayden? Takes place across the street, right? Looking forward to that. That's December 1st. And then the, on the December 3rd, we have the Christmas parade. Everybody looks forward to that. Wear your best ugly holiday sweater and enjoy floats, bands, and more. Starts at 4:00 on December 3rd. So look forward to having everybody here and looking for a real good time. I know Parks and Recs do a wonderful job with that. So thank you for what you do. That brings us to addition, agenda additions and deletions request. Do I have any additions or deletions? Counsel?
I need to make a motion to remove item 4B from the agenda.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Crystal. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Presentations and recognitions, new business, Zoom Room Dog Training. Melissa, were you in here? Melissa, step up and tell us a little bit about your business.
Yes. Well, first and foremost, hello. Thank you guys so much for the invitation this evening. So yes, my name is Melissa Morgul and I own Zoom Room Indian Trail. We are a positive reinforcement dog training gym right here smack in Indian Trail. We are in front of Walmart, right off the highway. So we offer group classes, private sessions, private gyms, playgroups, everything from the teeny tiny itty bitty puppy preschool all the way up to canine good citizen and therapy dog prep. We can work with some of the reactive friends, help them be a little bit more social as well as getting those puppies and those senior dogs back to a good and comfortable lifestyle for all of our neighbors. We also do have a retail aspect of our store. All of our treats are USA made. And then we do have enrichment items as well, snuffle mats, plush toys, and solution-based materials such as harnesses, leashes, and collars. But yeah, that's Zoom Room. And this is my first time coming to one of these. So if you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer, but I don't entirely know the format. So.
Very good. Do we have any questions? I have a couple. Where are you? Where are you located?
Yes. So we are right off Highway 74 in front of Walmart. Are you familiar with that area?
Yeah.
I'm sure. So in between Sally's and Verizon.
Gotcha.
Yep. Right over there.
Gotcha. And how long have you been there now?
Grand opening was October 21st. So we are very, very new.
You're new.
It has been a long process. I've been at this for a year, but doors finally opened on the 21st.
Very good. Now, do you go to people's homes too and train? Or is it all done there?
All done there. We are strictly in our indoor gym.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Anybody else have a question? Well, we'd like to thank you and we have something for you.
Oh, thanks.
We'd like to present you with the Zoom Room Dog Training. Town Indian Trail is honored to present this token of appreciation to you. So come on up and let's get our picture taken.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to public comments. By addressing counsel, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. First up is Heather Klaus.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to come in and first, I just want to say congrats on the election and thank everyone. And I know the process can be hectic in so many ways, but I think we can move forward towards a professional, hopefully a good start to a new candidacy. I really honestly, other than just addressing the council, I really want to say, anyone watching tonight, thank you guys for all your support. I was actually kind of excited. I was watching it myself and to watch the polls and everything else, I was like, yay, I got fourth. Look, my first time running. So I just want to say thank you to my supporters, all the people continuing to, you know, just communicate and really get involved in the community. And that's another reason why I came tonight, to just say, don't give up coming to the meetings. Don't give up trying to get involved. And I'm sure if anybody has any questions, you guys keep coming. And I just want to say thank you for everyone who supported me and taking a professional stance during the election. So thank you. The only other thing I want to add in general is just with later on things being voted on, if you guys could really take in consideration and just remember what we say on what we're going to do for our community, specifically speaking on the downtown master plan, please, 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 just take that in consideration and look at all the details. And if we have to put that on the back burner, then it would be great to be able to do a little bit more research on that. But thank you guys for letting me speak.
Dan Schellencamp.
Mayor and counsel, I just wanted to say congratulations to all those who won the election, Maricone, Crystal, Todd, and as well as Clarence. Congratulations to each one. It was a, it was a pleasure campaigning. Got to meet a lot of people. I do, I certainly make some changes next time, next time I go up against you, Maricone. But again, congratulations to those who won. And then probably the, I assume this is the last time I'll have an opportunity to talk about the downtown master plan, and I'll just say a couple of things. The, I'd still really like to see the apartments by right go away. I think, I think apartments are controversial enough, have a big enough impact on the town that, that the planning, planning board and the town council should always, always be part of that loop. I was pleased at the, at the coffee with the mayor last month, I think I mentioned it the last time I was up here, that, that the mayor was, was concerned about that being in there as well. And then one of my neighbors was working the polls and I think had a conversation with, with Crystal. And, and I was pleased to hear, I'll read his words to me. Crystal raised the specific point during the discussion about apartments by right. And, and I, the person who sent me this, I was happy to hear that she was also concerned about, about this apartments by right and was supportive of removing this from the plan. So I really, really hope that that's what you choose to do tonight. Take that, take that out of there. And then the other no religious assembly, I think it just sends the really, the wrong message. You're not going to be inundated by, by religious organizations coming into the 500 acres. All you're doing by leaving that, that no religious assembly in there is potentially harming the two historic churches that are, that are in the town. I know there's been a lot of safeguards for them, but it's not complete. For example, if they, if they wanted to add on to their buildings, could they? Could they add on? Could they double their size? Could they, you know, do other things on the property that they already own? So please consider removing both of those tonight. I've heard you say before things like, well, with no sewer, there's almost no chance of any, any building happening anytime soon. Well, there's, there's almost no chance of any new religious assemblies staking out a spot in the, in the 500 acres in downtown. So let's not even accidentally harm the two historic churches that are already in place. It just sends the wrong signal. And that's not what Indian Trail was, was founded upon. Thank you.
Michael Falconberry.
I also want to congratulate the winners of the election. No drama involved. First time, I think, in quite a few years, except for a select few. I also want to add to the previous speaker, I agree, you needed to do the by right. Look at that. Also limit the size of the structures. I think a good example to put in downtown would be like downtown Pineville or Fort Mill, two stories. Comment was made from a council member that you need to have identity for restaurants. I agree with the council member, it's not true. There's a restaurant in Fort Lawn, South Carolina, Wagon Wheel, out in the middle of nowhere. People come from miles around to eat there, pay cash, they don't take credit cards. Same with Golden Crown Rock Hill. When all the retail closed down around it, it's still no place to park. You look for good food, good service. That's what you're looking for, not just because you live near a restaurant. I live in Sun Valley. That doesn't mean I go to all the restaurants there. If I did, I would probably weigh 300 and something pounds. But again, I agree with the council member. It doesn't, it's not based on identity for restaurants to keep them going. It's the service you get. Also, I want to thank the town council and whoever else, the mayor, for the decorations for Christmas. It's been a while since I've seen that. It's a good touch. Also want to thank for the, an honor in supporting the veterans last Saturday. That was also a good honor too. And a good, good luck. I want to take a mini vacation, but town staff, if you need my help, you know how to contact me. I'm still available. Like I said, we'll see what happens the next four years. Thank you again.
Don Blankenberg. Yep. Grand Marshall.
Well, I just wanted to come tonight and thank you. Never knew or dreamed about what was going on until my daughters called and said, you're the grand marshal of the parade. I was like, what do we do? I said, I don't know. But I'll be there. But I just wanted to come and thank you for that opportunity and whatever, whatever you need me to do, I'll be glad to do it. But I did want to throw in one more into the works. Coming up this Saturday down at Sun Valley High School, we have a 2.2 mile walk run for veteran suicide awareness. That's one thing. At the post, we've, with the honor guard, we did four funerals almost in a row in just a little over a month of four different age groups, 29, 45, 56, and I can't remember the fourth one, but committed suicide, which is basically unacceptable. So that's why this coming Saturday, all the support we could get, we're going to do that walk run. Or like I told the ones at the post, I don't care if you don't walk or you don't run. Just, we need your money because 100% of that money goes to Independence Fund. There's no, no office or clerical work or financial support for that. 100% of the money goes to helping the veterans deal with the problems that they have that drive them to that point. So mainly, we just thank you for, I know you do support us and we're glad to support the community. And just thank you for your Saturday night Veterans Day program and we appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Don, before you leave, thank you for your service also, and thank you for, for coming and being our grand marshal. And it's an honor to have you, sir. It's an honor.
All I got to do is sit there, so anybody can do that.
Joe Musi. Did I pronounce that last name right?
First of all, congratulations on the ones that won your positions. I'm happy to see you all are here. I'm new to this. I don't know how all this works, so I'm just going to present what I have. I have chickens in my backyard. I have 14. I know we can have 20 according to the town limits, but your ordinance says that you can't have a rooster. And it doesn't say why. It just says no rooster. And I'm trying to see if we can get that changed. If the reason being that you can't have a rooster is because of noise ordinance, well, a dog barks at the same decibel level as a rooster. A dog will bark for the same reason a rooster will bark. There's really no justifiable reason not to have a rooster if you can have chickens. Humans have a 70 decibel voice level. Dogs and roosters bark or crow at 90 decibels. And I want to see what we can do to get that changed. I'd like to be able to breed my, my chickens, maybe, you know, one or two here or there as the, as they go down. I like to keep my, my flock at around 14. But having a rooster, I have the ability to breed them directly myself. And if I want to go to show roosters or something like that, you can breed and control your roosters, which you can't, or you know, your chickens, you can't do that if you're buying eggs from people. I have control of what I breed and how I breed. And by having a town ordinance saying no roosters, I'm completely restricted from that. So I'd like to know what I can do to get that, get that changed. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all for, do we have anybody for council comments? You might want to, Mr. Gag, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to mention that we didn't get this downtown overlay until probably, what, three or four weeks ago. It had been kicked around quite a bit. People who jumped to the conclusion that all these terrible things were going to happen and put them out there, many of them for political reasons, should have talked to the council, but, but they didn't do it. Established religious organizations have nothing to worry about, and we told them all along, we told all the, the citizens, they had nothing to worry about. We have taken it and we have made, customized it to what we think the people in the town want. It's a shame that, that all this chatter went on about the town and rumors and whatever. So in the future, appreciate people stating the facts and asking the questions and not spreading untruths. So I think you'll be happy tonight with what we've done. And we had the best thing in mind for the town and the people all along. And I think that you'll be happy when you see what we have. Thank you.
Mr. Ambler?
Yeah, what time is that run walk Saturday? What time is it?
9:00 in the morning. That was Sun Valley High School.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. That brings us up to law enforcement update. Captain Hunky.
I'll echo what everyone else said. Congratulations on those who, who won the election. It's what this country's built on, is the voice of the people and the people spoke. I just want to say for Halloween, our guys had almost a dozen side by sides, dirt bikes, four wheelers out in the big communities, big neighborhoods. Sorry we couldn't hit them all. But we gave away probably 30 pounds, 40 pounds of candy. And there's nothing better to see a kid's face when you pull up side on blue lights and ask them, what are they doing? And they don't know how to answer that to the police officers. And then you have to kind of clarify, are y'all trick or treating? And they say yes, and say, what are the special words? Trick or treat. And you know, you give them, you give one handful of candy and the rest are just all over. You can't, can't get enough of the candy. But we had a great time and really enjoyed that. Not much to speak of on the crime in the area. Would say that Rogers Road area, we've had a rash of a lot of car break-ins, a lot of stuff going on. So please, if you're from the area, you know people from the area, please remind everybody to keep their cars locked, keep all valuables out of your cars. Great practice no matter where you live, but that would help us out a whole lot to keep, keep the crime down. So if you guys don't have anything for me, that's all I've got.
Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you guys.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Brings us to public hearings. Brandy, you want to come up and, no, you're not coming up?
No. I'm sorry. What? No public hearings.
Oh, I know there's no public hearing. I'm sorry. I said public hearings. I meant to skip over that and go to old business, vote on the downtown master plan. Now, I'm sorry. I knew there was no public hearing.
Good evening, mayor and council. I think we've presented this multiple times. We've filtered questions over and over again. So I don't have anything formal to present to you, but I'd be glad to entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
We're going to do some motions. And there's a change to multi-unit apartments for permitted use for conditional zoning. Does that bring that discretion back to council?
Correct. So as a, if you, if you wanted to make the by right apartments a conditional zoning, it would require a full application, community meeting, planning board, and then finally town council would, would get to make that decision.
Well, in the meantime, and we approve this plan or deny it, would that halt, put a halt on anybody moving forward until we get that changed?
That's the way it is right now.
Well, I mean, they could go ahead and break ground tomorrow if we approved this today, per se.
Approve.
If they wanted to build an apartment complex on their property.
Approve, approve it by right?
Yeah, by right. Excuse me. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think that we've heard clearly from the community and from council that the by right, so that's why you see on your motion sheet that it would be a conditional zoning. It really doesn't change anything. That's what it is today.
Okay, cool. I misunderstood you. I thought that, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So apartments, multi-unit apartments are CZ in the downtown district today on the books.
Thank you.
Would allow any apartments to be built without coming to council?
Not, not just sole apartment projects, no. It would not. It would, it would have to go through the CZ process.
But would it come to council? Have to come to council?
Yes, the conditional zoning process includes council.
What she said.
Yes, it includes council, yeah. You have, the council would have to approve it.
They would have to go through the planning board, the entire process, engineering, and come to council.
Traffic study, school study, community meetings, public notice, planning board, town council. It's quite a process. And then it finally lands with you guys for a final decision.
There's no by rights for apartments in this plan, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And the churches are all taken care of, correct? There's no.
Yes, have been for several months now.
That's right. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I just want to, I'm glad we're coming to, I mean, this is, how long we been working on this? Six months or about? Close to six months?
It's been a long five months. Yes, sir.
Been a long six months. And been a lot of things said that, that they didn't need to be said. And I think we can all agree with that. And there was never, ever any doubt that churches were, were going to be there. I mean, that, that, we even discussed that in meetings. And also, I think as a whole, council favors bringing or taking the by right out of it and, and making it, anything that goes, you know, apartment wise is going to have to come through council. And I think those are all, all good. Is there any, of course, we're adding religious assembly, childcare center, fraternal organization, lodge permitted uses in the downtown core district. So, and I think that's both districts, is it not? Or is it just all just in the core?
So right now, those uses are already allowed in the transition district. It was only the small 99 acres in the core.
And, you know, and one thing I think people should also remember is, is this plan has less density than the plan that was there before.
Correct. In some ways, we're taking a step backwards, less density, less height, adding some uses in.
Gotcha. Go ahead.
There's multi-pages of permitted and non-permitted uses. Is this the only ones we're adding back in? There's apple like dog groomers and there's a lot of other ones, funeral homes and radio stations, TV stations. There's a lot.
We are open to suggestions by council. This is your plan. Those three that you see on your motion sheet were simply just what we had heard and felt that the majority of council wanted to add back in. But we've, we've been saying for, for some time now, you know, this is your plan, so you could choose to, to add others back in as well.
Well, yeah, before I vote on it, I'd like to see the revised plan instead of just a motion to review it.
The only revisions are there on the motion sheet before you. So just the three.
And that's the only revision.
The three uses that being added back in and the apartments by right being made a conditional zoning. But now if council has others, we're all ears.
Well, I, let me just say, we've, we've had an opportunity for months to, to present what, and I've come to you many times, and I know, you know, the churches were, were big with me. I wanted to, we did it, and we've, we've got the by right out of it. So, you know, I would have preferred council to work, work with, with the planning department and come up with a good plan opposed to, to looking for reasons not to do it. And those reasons in not doing it, we, we have, I think, have, have changed those reasons into doing it, to doing, I think, positive things. I know the planning departments worked very hard at it, and I was very much against the, the by right part of it also, and I stated that fact. But yeah, it's up for a motion. If anybody else have any, go ahead, Todd.
But we're still in the, we're still in 500 acres, though. We're still taking all the different, like 20-plus zoning categories and reducing them to that three, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, that's what I disagree with.
Staff feels very strongly that that is, you know, the plan has been somewhat watered down and we understand the concerns, but rezoning and getting consistent zoning downtown is, is the most important step in your decision tonight, in my opinion.
Okay. Dennis?
I mean, how much, how much stricter can you get than the original plan they had back to 2000? Was it 2006? I mean, it pretty much was open to about anything downtown, wasn't it? I mean, any kind of dog grooming, whatever you wanted to, to come up with.
Yeah, there were, there were quite a few things within the code that really don't help foster the downtown that you want. You know, we've, we've already seen churches just in the few months that we've been discussing this move in. So that, that definitely is a reality. But of course, our, our two prominent churches that have been in downtown are protected.
Yeah, it was just ridiculous. The bulldozer bulldozing churches and the, I mean, it's ridiculous that people are saying that. And, you know, the people, people who chose not to listen to the truth and nothing we can do about them.
Todd, did you, did you want to say something?
I think I did. I think I forgot what I was going to say. Hold on, give me a minute. The, but the 2006 plan was never implemented. This is, this is a three pawn thing. It was my understanding, 2006 plan was just a plan. It was never an approved rezoning. It was never approved UDO. So this is a whole different ballgame here than what was in 2006. So here is, we're not just doing a plan, we're also asking for doing a rezoning of five hundred acres, and we're also asking to change the UDO. And there's a lot of different things built into there, cost and different things like that. And I just really, I think most people like to see us finish the road over here before we do all this other. And I, and I think a lot of people still got questions about the rezoning of everything. So I, at this point, I, I don't really, even with these changes, I still just don't feel comfortable with it, but thank you.
Any other questions? All right, last one, Dennis.
Just a comment. I, I know that we've talked about, uh, there are so many fragmented properties here that uh, it's gonna be extremely difficult to build, build a downtown here because there's so many owners. This, this would take thirty years to, to try and work through if these folks who own their property decide they want to sell it or they want to do, you know, the economy is gonna dictate what happens to downtown. If, if we, people claim that we, uh, we bought twelve acres we couldn't do anything with, well, there's gonna be, uh, in our plans, a community center there. That, that there's gonna be nice things come here in this town, in the downtown area that's gonna uplift the value of the properties. And so if people on those properties want to continue to, to uh, improve their properties and, and value, increase their value and increase the rents that they get, then they'll be able to do it, or they can sell their property and let somebody else come in here. But this is not gonna change things overnight. It's, it's gonna be an extended amount of time before anything can be done.
Correct. We have a lot of challenges before us with, with actually getting a downtown, for sure.
Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, sir. But before I do that, can I just say a couple of words, sir?
Sure.
There, there's been, I, I don't want to say there's a lot of people, there's been a few, a select few people who spoke multiple times um, against the plan. And I've sat here and I've asked for suggestions, things that we can include, improve, and so on. But what I've heard is, we don't like the plan, and that doesn't necessarily help, right? Because you need input. But the fact of the matter is, um, some of the council have listened to um, various persons within the community inside this building and also outside um, here. They've heard some of the concerns that some people have. I have no issue with the council wanting to have a final say, whether it's this council or future councils, on the actual zoning of uh, you know, multi-apartments. So that, I think, is a fair ask, if you were, if you were ask, if you were, no pun intended, asking me. But with that being said, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the downtown master plan twenty twenty-three.
Okay, do you want to read, read the, read it as, as?
Well, it's separate motions, right? So that's my first motion.
Okay, okay, do that again, I'm sorry.
All right, sorry. I would like to make a motion to approve the downtown master plan twenty twenty-three.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, Mr. Gay and Ms. Buholic in favor, all against? Mr. Barber, Mr. Ambergy against?
I would like to make, I would like to make a second motion.
Excuse me, sir?
Sorry?
Just real quickly, um, our, our fabulous town attorney has asked for me to read um, the consistency findings. I'm sorry to bore you with that, but it has been a little while since we've read that, if I may.
No problem. So just a question of clarification, do I need to make the motion again after you've read the consistency finding?
Yes, please.
Okay, not a problem.
Sorry, okay.
Thank you, Toddler.
All right, um, so for ZT twenty twenty-three zero zero nine eight, um, staff finds the proposed amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Economic development goal number one, number two, um, economic development goal number five, land use and housing goal number one, land use and housing goal number three, land use and housing goal number four, mobility and transportation goal number one. And we feel that this ordinance amendment's in the best interest of the public because it does promote community engagement, downtown revitalization, economic development, land use and housing, mobility and transportation goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan by implementing the proposed downtown master plan update. Thank you. And I'll have one for the ZM case as well.
All right. So Mayor, I'll go again, and I'll make a motion to approve the downtown master plan twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Same as before, Ms. Buholic, Mr. Gay, Ms. Mr. Mr. Gay and Mr. McIntyre in favor, against? Todd and Tom against? So it passes three to two.
All right. And I'll make a motion to approve ZT two zero two-three dash zero zero nine eight with the following amendments. Add religious assembly, childcare center, and fraternal organization, all lodge, as permitted uses in the downtown core district. And change multi-unit apartments from a permitted use to a conditional zoning in the downtown core district and the downtown transitional district.
All in favor? Ms. Buholic, Mr. Gay, um, and four, and um, also, Mr. McIntyre in against? As uh, we have Mr. Ambergy and Todd. So three to two, it passes. Next.
Quickly, the consistency findings for ZM twenty twenty-three zero zero nine eight. The proposed rezoning request is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan, community engagement and communication goal number one, downtown revitalization goal number one, downtown revitalization goal number two, economic development goal number one, economic development goal number two, and economic development goal number five, land use and housing goal number one, land use and housing goal number three, land use and housing goal number four, uh, mobility and transportation goal number one. As you can see, this hits a lot of our goals. This rezoning is a reasonable request and in the public interest because it promotes community engagement, downtown revitalization, economic development, land use and housing, and mobility and transportation goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan by implementing the proposed downtown master plan twenty twenty-three update. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consistency, consistency statement as read into the record by staff for ZT two zero two-three dash zero zero nine eight.
Okay, go ahead. How would you do it? All in favor? Sorry. Ms. Buholic, Mr. Gay, Mr. McIntyre four, against? Mr. Ambergy and Mr. Barber against? Passes three to two.
I'll make another motion, sir, and then after that, I have one more, so I know it's a lot. But I'll make a motion to approve ZM two zero two-three dash zero zero nine eight downtown rezoning as presented by staff on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Mr. Gay, Ms. Buholic, Mr. McIntyre in favor, all against? Mr. Ambergy and Mr. Barber against? Passes three to two.
And the last motion, sir, is a motion to approve the consistency statement as read into the record by staff for ZM two zero two-three dash zero zero nine eight as presented.
All in favor? Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, Ms. Buholic is four, against? Mr. Barber and Mr. Ambergy against? It passes three to two. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bring us an update on Shady Bluff Project, Mr. Hunsinger.
Mayor, Council, um, just wanted to provide you an update on this project. As you see in front of your screen, this is just to give you a kind of a location. You have Shady Bluff on the, uh, left side of your screen, and then you have, uh, if you notice where First Citizen Bank is, oh, I'm sorry, oh, First Citizen Bank's right here. We have a, an existing culvert that goes underneath Indian Trail Road behind the, uh, First Citizen's Bank. This is what we're gonna talk about, um, as far as uh, our, uh, little issue with the storm drainage in this area. So, the Shady Bluff Improvements Project, now, again, that is a road enhancement project that the town approved to move forward with. At this, this, at that, at this time, we've been trying to get the design fully approved. And um, and unfortunately, the culvert crossing, now, get, this is the next photo. There's a culvert crossing right here that, that we have to approve, uh, based on our Shady Bluff Improvements Project. Then you also have the culvert that's, again, I mentioned, behind First Citizen's Bank. Now, like I stated in the memo that y'all got in y'all's packet, it's basically, once you uh, know hydraulically, uh, the new, the new size of the, the pipe you're gonna put into a roadway improvement project. For instance, Shady Bluff is an existing thirty-six inch pipe. We're gonna improve it to a twelve-by-six culvert, box culvert. Well, hydraulically, we know the twelve-by-six will work, but once you figure that out, you know, the designer has to go back and, and, and figure out through, uh, the pipe being in FEMA and everything, the FEMA floodplain, which is in the blue, and floodway, which is in the dash hatch. They have to figure out, okay, well, we've created the elevation of the new road based on the culvert. So once you do that, you gotta figure out hydraulically, all right, is it going to drain through the culvert or is it gonna backwater? Which is basically backup, and this is the backup now, and this map is upstream, is going this way. So it's going from First Citizen Banks back across Shady Bluff is upstream. So in order to do that, we need to, we need to figure out, okay, we have to get a no rise from FEMA, a no rise meaning basically, we can't allow the floodplain to rise uh, uh, to a certain elevation. So in order to do that, we had to run the model, well, the consultant found out during the running the model, using the new road elevation, which we're only raising the road about a foot on Shady Bluff, that it caused an issue. But the issue actually is the existing culvert behind First Citizen Bank. That is a two sixty-inch uh, CMP pipes, uh, that we obviously have to upgrade with our Indian Trail Road Phase Two project. If you recall, Indian Trail Road goes all the way to seventy-four, all that's gonna be widened. Well, we, we have to upgrade that pipe. Well, and doing the, uh, doing the modeling, going back and forth, they figured out, well, we need to figure out what that size is gonna be for that project before we can move forward with Shady Bluff. So basically, we have to put the project on hold to make sure we can provide a, a good culvert size for our Phase Two project, Complete Street project, and the Shady Bluff project. So they have to work in, you know, in tandem, and unfortunately, one consultant's doing one, another consultant's doing the, the other project. So we are having to wait till, um, the Complete Street project hydraulic model is done. And once we get that, we can take that model, give it to the other consultant, they can combine the models and try to make sure that Shady Bluff culvert will work, in a nutshell. So that's taken probably another thirty days. We should have an extra in December. But for some, if for some reason, it still doesn't work, and we have to go through FEMA to do a CLOMAR, which is a letter of mat revision, we may end up having to change the elevation of that road, which will cause a, a small redesign. I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but again, right now, where the elevation, uh, with the new elevation on the road, it doesn't work. But hoping we fix the downstream culvert size-wise, it'll help this one. Hope I wasn't confusing. If you have any questions about that.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Is there a significant cost expected with um, that? I know that you said the redesign will cause a little extra. But if you change the elevation, would the cost, the actual cost of the road be a lot more because of that?
No, it would just maybe cause a little additional more right-of-way acquisition because you're, you're creating more of a bank embankment slopes and everything if you raise that road any further. Again.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we go from one foot to three foot, it's gonna cause a whole lot of impact.
Todd, I appreciate you giving us a, an update on that.
Not a problem.
Keeping us, keeping us abreast of it. Go, go ahead with your next project.
All right. So next up is our Chestnut Square Park project. Again, it's in two phases now, and you got two A and two B. We're just gonna talk about two B for right now. Uh, basically, uh, like I told you before, we went through a sewer, um, issue with the county of figuring out how many, um, units we need. And what we did initially, did in the design, in which the consultant felt like was adequate, adequate, was to mirror the existing restroom building that's out there. Size, units, toilets, urinals, all that. Well, when we got to talking about the county, obviously, we went back and forth, and they finally, um, came down on their, their twenty or so toilets down to just a few more. And so we had to upsize that, that structure now, and architect obviously needed a little extra money to do the redesign of that extra, uh, of square footage of that building and adding a couple more units in there. And so I'm asked the council to approve additional funds of four thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars, uh, to this architectural firm under the Chestnut Square Park Phase Two B project. And I remember this, the ordinance is, is basically Chestnut Square Park Phase Two. These two projects encompassed into that one ordinance. So we're still talking about the same ordinance, just, uh, switching funds here and there to make this work. We can talk about that in a minute. Any questions about the contract cost and the reason why? Yes, sir.
Do we have water and sewer for the restroom?
We don't know that yet.
Huh?
We don't know that yet.
We don't know yet?
Yeah, so we don't, we don't really officially know if we can get, uh, Phase Two B approved with sewer. But the, but the, but the work needs to happen so we can figure that out.
Okay, so we need to design a restroom that we don't have water and sewer for?
Yeah, the county has to review the plans, or we don't even get to even think about the possibility.
So if we don't do the plan to them, we don't get approved, what you're saying?
We don't, yeah, yeah, we don't even get to know if we can get approved. You have to go through the process and that's, that's the unfortunate thing, you have to do the design, and so I have to hit the design done to even know if we can get it.
Talking about putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, well, that's.
Todd, do we not do this on every project? I mean, don't, don't.
Well, for, I mean, again, if you gotta go through the county, that's what the county has to, they want a full set of plans or they're not gonna allow you. They, they can't take, you gotta understand, they're not self-permitting. They, they, they have to have permission from the state, so they have to submit those plans to the state and say, okay, well, we think we got sewer, we need you to say, okay, to allow us to say to them that we have sewer. So it's a two-step process for them. That's why you have to go through the, the full design, and that's why they will not allow you, let you, uh, know if you got sewer within the sketch plan, uh, because they've gotta go through the state process. So their, their hands are tied just like ours, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion, sir. Make a motion to approve funding of Macadam Supplemental Agreement Number Three in the amount of four thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars.
All in favor? Mr. Gay, Mr. McIntyre, Ms. Buholic in favor, against?
Everybody was in favor.
I didn't see, I didn't see you raise your hand. It was unanimous, thank you. Go ahead, Todd.
All right, so for Chestnut Square Park Phase Two, Phase Two A, um, again, with the, the bore walk, uh, is part of this design, and because the, uh, the, the engineering firm that designed that ECS, which is basically a structural engineering firm, they designed the plans, and um, we feel, as the other consultant feels, that they should be out there to oversee the construction of that, especially the micro piles. And so, um, they presented a proposal for that, and we also, since they're gonna be out there to do that, go ahead and have them perform some small soil testing for the parking lot area to make sure, uh, the compaction's correct for that. And so that's the contract, basic proposal is for oversight of the bore walk and for some soil testing, uh, in an amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And that will be absorbed through the construction portion of this project in the CIP.
Todd, thank you. Um, you know, from my understanding, um, from when we approved the project initially, or disapproved of, um, we weren't gonna use all those funds, you know? Why can't we draw from those funds that we currently approved?
Well, with the way the ordinance works, if you, the seven-half million total, this project itself is only gonna be about two and a half to three million dollars, estimated. So you're absorbing that money into that two and a half to three million right now. Now, once we come back for Phase Two B, um, obviously, y'all have the right to change that however you want it, but at this time, based on the, the project, I'm trying to bid for two A and what's being bid out right now, we're getting bids back next Tuesday, uh, this contract wouldn't be needed for that if it goes into construction.
So this project's costing more money. I mean, we're just now, if we approve this, there's twenty-three thousand additional dollars on top of the seven. of the seven-and-a-half million dollars, right?
Can I, yeah, that's the question I wanted to re-ask you.
No, 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 no.
Let Todd answer the question, please.
So, yeah, so, and my apologies if I went clear on this. So, the $19,800 is in the, is being absorbed in the construction part of the project. So, it's still underneath the seven-and-a-half million. And when we came to y'all, came to y'all previously about this 2A project, we stated it would be around two-and-a-half, three million dollars. So, that really hasn't changed. And the only way that would be higher, if for some reason, in my opinion, the borewalk came out to be higher than what we anticipated. But, as far as the rest of this project, we're fairly confident in the numbers that we're estimated for. So, we'll see Tuesday when we get the bid back.
No, no, I just wanted Todd to clarify, because just so that he could understand, that's all I'll say. Just to clarify the amount, that's all.
Okay, not a problem.
Mr. Mayor, if the council will look on page 28 of their agenda package, they will see the revised budget ordinance, which shows the shifting of those dollars.
All right. So, I'd like to make a motion then.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve funding of CEI Services contract to ECS Southeast in the amount of $19,800.
All in favor? Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, and Mr. Buholic, in favor? All against? Mr. Amburgi and Mr. Barber, against? Passes three to two.
All right. So, now that we have approved the $4,765 for the architect, we need to make a adjustment to the CIP ordinance, because the design, we only had 332,000, and that is not covered in that. And so, what we did was, we moved money from the construction portion. If you remember the CIP ordinance that's in the packet, your design is under the fund balance, and some of your construction's under fund balance. So, what I did was, I basically moved $5,000 to the design portion, and took $5,000 away from the construction portion of the fund balance fund. So, I just need your approval to amend that CIP ordinance. Any questions?
I'll make a motion, sir, to approve the amended Chestnut Square Park Phase 2 ordinance.
All in favor? Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gay, and Mr. Buholic, in favor? Against? Mr. Amburgi and Mr. Barber, against? Passes three to two.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Okay, that brings us up to Ms. Cox. Ms. Cox, the code of conduct.
Good evening. The code of conduct was in your last agenda packet, but it's being pulled up on the screen for you now. I'm just going to run through some of the highlights. If there's anything you have any questions about, any language you want removed or additions to it, we can certainly have that discussion now, and then bring it back for a vote at the next meeting. First page is just an introduction, and then there's some rules for the council members, just to be prepared, to participate, to be focused and pay attention at the meetings. And then, on the next page, protocol. The mayor, the mayor's representative is always the official representative of the town for official purposes. Under political endorsements, council members have the right to support and endorse candidates, but they shall not do so at any public meetings held pursuant to 143, 318, 10. That's just the open meetings statute cited there. There's a summary of the public hearing procedure as well. And then, a section on intra-council conduct, you know, how you treat each other, just be professional, practice civility, refrain from making personal threatening, abusive, or disparaging comments to each other, recognize the role of the mayor as the presiding officer, and if there's a disagreement, it can be challenged by a point of order, be punctual and on time, continue respectful behavior in private, be thoughtful and respectful and truthful in all forms of communication, including the use of email and social media, and abide by the rules of debate found in the Indian Trail Elected Officials Rule of Procedure. And then, that language is included in this code of conduct as well. There's then a section with conduct with staff, treat all staff as professional, limit contact, and go through the manager prior to contacting staff directly, do not disrupt staff from doing their jobs, do not make inappropriate comments, jokes, or physical contact with town staff, do not publicly criticize an individual employee. That those sorts of comments should only be made to the town manager through private correspondence or conversation. Under six, we added, under not getting involved in administrative functions. We don't really grant many town licenses, so we're going to add permits to that language that's currently not in there under bullet number six. And I don't think that there's an issue of anyone attending meetings unless requested by staff, but we just wanted to make that clear. Try to limit requests for staff support, go through the town manager, and do not solicit political support from staff. There's some general rules under conduct with the public. Be welcoming to speakers, no matter the person's point of view, be an active listener, avoid debate and argument with the public, make no personal comments about the other council members. Disagreements are fine, but do it in a civil way. Then, there's a section on conduct with other public agencies. And it's important to state whether the opinion you're giving is your personal opinion or the official stance of the town. Conduct with boards and commissions. That's pretty self-explanatory. Conduct with the media and use of electronic social media. We're going to add some language to that section, where it has the sentence about consulting with the communications director, we're going to add "and/or" the town manager. And if you are, in fact, the designated spokesperson for the town, it's important that you stay on those specific talking points and not import your, insert your personal viewpoint on an issue when you're speaking solely as a appointed spokesperson for the town. And then, under enforcement, there's a description of the censure procedure and a process for asking for an advisory opinion. Happy to answer any questions, or I can certainly sit down, and you all can discuss, and let me know what you like or don't like about this.
Mr. Gay?
Can we make this a public document? I want it out there public so that the public knows what is expected of us. And if they come to somebody, trying to get them to do some things, then it can be pointed to that, you know, our ethics policy allows us to do this, but not do that. I think it would be a good idea for this to be published and made public.
What we can do at the next meeting, if you all decide this is what you want to adopt, we can have it on the agenda, and you can have a resolution adopting the code of conduct for the Indian Trail Town Boards.
Go ahead, Ms. McIntyre.
I would like a section in here on sexual harassment training. I think as public officials, that is critical in how we conduct ourselves, being here in a power position. And there's a power imbalance when it comes to the staff. I think, you know, even in my professional career, it's something that I go through every year, training, do's and don'ts, the proper way to greet or and/or to interact with somebody. I think, even if we're all adults, I still think it does put the town in a better position from a legal standpoint, if that training is offered to the council members. I am pretty certain that the staff gets it, but I think it needs to be elevated to this body. That is just my opinion, but I would highly recommend that.
As a requirement?
As a requirement.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too.
And I would make it annual. And the reason I say the annual is because you could have a vacancy on council, a new person comes in, still, I think that way it's a catch-all, you know? Every year, you go for the training, so therefore, it becomes a good habit to have in terms of just how you engage with the employees.
Yes, sir. We can certainly add that.
Any other comments?
Is there anything here about misuse of a town logo or copyright infringement?
There's not in the code of conduct. Would you like to add some language regarding that?
I think that'd be appropriate.
Any other comments? Okay, now, you're going to add all this on to what you've already got here, correct?
Correct.
Now, we're going to try to do, try to come up with something at the next meeting, or...
Yes, the finished document will be in your agenda packet before the next meeting, so you'll have time to review that, assuming everyone's on board with it. At that point, then, you can adopt the resolution approving the code of conduct. If there's more changes to make, we can make additional changes at that time.
Okay. Todd?
Since we got it, it's going to affect the new council member, maybe we should do it in January.
That's up to the council.
You know, it's not going to affect the one rolling off.
Right.
It's going to, you know, I think the new council members should ever say so.
Yes, sir.
I mean, what do you think?
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
All right. We'll save it for the January meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But, thank you, Melon.
Question, we'll vote on this, though, next meeting, as far as the changes and that sort of thing? So, we'll have it in effect?
No, we're going to do it in January.
Okay. I mean, on the ethics?
Yes, I mean, that's what we just, that's what we just agreed to do, so...
Well, I could see us doing it on the training, but let's just go ahead and do the ethics next meeting. The voting on the content of it.
Well, okay, let me get a raise a hand. Who wants to do it in the next meeting? Who wants to do it in January? That's what we agreed to do.
I'm not talking about the training, I'm talking about the text and the ethics itself.
We're not going to do the training. I'm not following you. I don't think we're going to do the training in January. We're just trying to get the paper and stuff done.
You don't think we can do that by December? You don't think we can do that by December? It's not that big of a deal to add the extra.
The question was, Dennis, is whether or not Marcus is leaving, and we have a new council member coming on, and he would be the one that would be affected. And I watched the nodding of the heads and...
Well, I think we'll all be affected.
Let Clarence work on that also. So, what have you got to say?
No, he's able to vote next time when we do our go-arounds, correct? I mean, once he comes in, he would be able to vote. Would he have time to be able to review it prior to the vote if we did vote next meeting?
Whatever y'all decide.
I'm just asking. I think that's how it was. I'm just asking.
I think the best thing to do is just go ahead and get it done in fact.
All right. Who wants to go ahead and get it done? Because I don't have a vote in it. What now?
Okay. Maybe one solution that gets at both goals is keep in mind at your December meeting, y'all've got some business that this council has to take care of. And then, you have a changeover where you swear in the new members, and we could schedule it for the first action by the new council with Mr. Ossie-Brooks, and that would also catch the December if y'all want to do it that way.
If we did it in the December meeting, though, is he going to have a chance to have to read everything, and he needs to get the proper...
With the consent of council, we can make sure that he has a copy, and any of his questions or concerns are addressed.
Okay. If we're going, I didn't know we were going to do it that way. Never seen it done that way before. So, I've never seen anything done where a council member, before he's on council, reads stuff that he's going to vote on something that he's going to get into. So, I...
If y'all were good with it...
That's fine with me. Okay. I don't have a problem. Yeah, just make sure he gets the agenda package, and we'll go from there. So, that's, we got, agreed to that. Okay. All right, very good. Brings us up to new business, a potential discussion of revision to town manager's contract.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion, sir, if that's possible. I can go ahead?
Sure.
All right, thank you. I'd like to authorize the town attorney to amend the town manager's contract to indicate a 5% salary increase and a one-time 401K contribution of $7,000, and for this to be retroactive to August 31st, 2023.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. No discussions items, no closed session, we've already done it. Let's go to manager's report.
First of all, I want to thank you for the revision of my contract. After 40-something years, I'm still amazed that nine-and-a-half out of 10 days are still very enjoyable, and they've been very enjoyable here. One half of a day, it doesn't matter anyway. But, we're having a lot of fun here, we're making a lot of progress. Tonight, you've already gotten a briefing on where we are with 2A. Moore's Park, we are waiting for the county to respond to our request. The water lines, we reach out to them about once every two weeks, and I understand they're trying to find where they want to fund it from, and then it'll go to the county commission. And once we have that information, we will relay it to you. First Avenue, we continue to work on that. I understand that the sod person will be there in the first part of December. However, the residents of First Avenue will be some, see some adjustments coming before then. They've got to prep the soil for that. And there's still some wind stream lines that have not been buried, and we don't want them to lay the sod and then cut the lines in the process. So, we will be happy when that's done. I think you're pretty much up to date with Indian Trail Road. I told you in one of the manager's reports, we have closed on those three parcels. There's about another 47 of them to go. And we've asked them to try to focus on this intersection over here with the dentist's office, and I'll keep you informed on that. Poplar Glen, the Stormwater folks are replacing five pipes, ranging from 15 inches to 18 inches, to improve the overall drainage. And those pipes are just rotted. What can I say? That's a two-phase project. The second phase is replacing two 72-inch pipes. For those of you, did you hear what I said? 72 inches, that's six-feet pipes, those are huge pipes. And replacing three 36-inch pipes. ARPA purchasing is well underway. I've already mentioned that we're waiting on the Moore Park Waterline Project. Let's shift over to Emerald Woods if we can, expecting 90% of the plans before Thanksgiving. The plans will be issued to the permitting soon after that. The easement plaits for Emerald Woods are being finalized and should be handed over to an acquisition company before Thanksgiving. And just to remind you that Thanksgiving is next week. Let's talk about some upcoming things on December 12th. We expect to have a proposal to award a bid for Chestnut Park Phase 2A. Keep in mind what that includes. That's the surface level, which would include additional parking and things of that nature. We've also asked the auditor to come and give you an audit report. And keep in mind, the audit is your financial picture, has of June 30th. And I'm going to, I'm going to give you the good news first before she does. You had a very good audit. You had a clean audit, and you had an audit that was turned in early. And so, the staff is to be commended for that. They work very hard with the auditor to make sure they have the information they need in a timely fashion. And if we can keep you happy and the auditor happy and the state of North Carolina happy, then we're in pretty good shape. We'll give you an ARPA surplus property item. There'll also be a tax report. We want to recognize an outgoing board member. Mr. McIntyre, thank you for your service. I think you've told me it's been six years, and I've known you about half of those, about half that term. What else we got? And then, we will be swearing in council member Ossie-Brooks, who has been attending our meetings for the last two years or so, and we'll welcome him. And so, we then, the old council closes out, we take a little break, we seat the new council, and then we begin taking care of business. There will be a taking of the oath of office, selection of mayor pro temp, appointment of a delegate and alternate to CARPO, which is Charlotte Regional Transportation Organization, appointment of delegate and alternate to Central Line of Regional Council, and appointment of representatives to the North Carolina League of Municipalities. You will also approve your 2024 meeting schedule. These are all routine businesses, and we will add the rules of conduct as also an action item. One thing I wanted to get feedback from the council on is, we have been calling Navajo Extension Navajo Extension. It's not the official name. I mentioned several weeks ago whether we wanted to go ahead and officially name that road. road, and if you wanted to, we could schedule that in December also, or if you wanted to defer that, we can do that also. And there's several different ways to name a street, but, um, if I could get some feeling from the council on what y'all wanted to do with that.
You want a name suggestion? McIntyre Way.
If those guys will vote on it and the county signs off on it.
I'm joking, please do not.
We can bring it up next month, let the new council decide how they want to handle that, but as we start the road construction, there is a process now. It used to be if a city wanted to name a street, they'd just name the street, but now it's got to go through the county and 911 and, and all of that, so it's a much more involved process. I do want to remind you that also at your December meeting, we'll have an item on there to open some closed session, uh, meeting minutes, and keep in mind what our procedure is, we do it about every six months. We invite you to go in there and look through those minutes, but we're going to put it on the agenda, so you've got some time if you would get up with Trina directly, she can accommodate that for you. Also, um, town hall's going to be closed the 23rd, 24th. It is Thanksgiving and the day after, and so we are posting that information. And, um, when the new council comes on board, I'm sending out an email tomorrow reminding the council and encourage each of the council members to attend the essentials of municipal government. I think two years ago, Commissioner Ambergy, Commissioner Buholic, Commissioner Gay, and Mayor Cohn attended, and Commissioner Buholic, I told her, I said, I drive the speed limit, and she said, yes, I know, I've seen it firsthand. So we'll send you those dates, we really would encourage you to attend. Just a lot of benefit in that, and Trina will set up all the reservations, we cover your expenses. And in April will be City Vision, um, April 23rd or so, that will be in Winston-Salem. Again, Crystal, I know you attended this year and got a lot out of it. I think the last thing is more of a, a personal note. Abby and I were not able to attend VGR Components, and y'all recognized that business last meeting, and she and I attended that company. It's in the old Hickory area, and we spent probably an hour and a half over there just understanding what they do, and it was impressive, to say the least. And so we've got, you know, we've recognized eleven or twelve businesses at this council in 2023, but there's a lot more businesses, a lot more industry that's moving in, particularly in our industrial park zoning by right, that's just making things that are touching the world and making the world a better place. Again, thank you for the contract adjustment, thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
Okay, brings council comments.
Councilmember Ambergy?
I just want to say, um, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and, um, don't forget about the BFW Walk and Run this Saturday from, at 9:00 AM. God bless everyone, have a great night.
Councilmember Buholic?
Thank you all for coming. Um, I just want to thank the staff for all your hard work, it's apparent in everything you do, so I do want to thank y'all. Welcome Zoom room. I have two dogs, as long as you can guarantee me you can teach old dogs new tricks, I may be seeing you soon. Other than that, have a happy Thanksgiving and drive home safe.
Councilmember Barber?
Okay. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Cohn, Mr. Ossabrooks, and Ms. Buholic on their election. I'd like to give a shout-out, my wife and I were able to attend the Food for Families fundraiser. If you're interested, for twenty dollars a month, they have a program where you can give, or you can give, or you can volunteer. It was really amazing that in one year, they delivered food to over 9,300 homes in Union and Anson County, so they're making a difference in making sure people getting fed. Great organization, they're actually located here on Van Buren, um, and here in Indian Trail. Also, the Union County Christmas Bureau, still taking applications. Uh, I think the last day is this Friday, November 17th, if anybody wants to apply there. Other than that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and thanks for everybody coming out. Have a, God bless the evening, thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
I'd like to thank Mr. Moochie for coming in and representing the Roosters in the town. The next step is to talk to the planning department to see if maybe you can get Rooster consideration, and that would be Brandy's department. Also, I'm delighted that we're getting an ethics policy, and it's going to be published and in writing and set, we sorely need that. Thank you all for the patience that you've had during this downtown overlay. We've addressed, I think, all the important issues that people were concerned about. I apologize that, you know, we had a fact, a faction out there that distorted it and had everybody upset, it's, it's just a shame, and hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. If you need a turkey, the Lions Club has a turkey shoot going through Thanksgiving Day, so I'd love to have you come out and see how your shooting skills are. Other than that, everyone have a safe trip home. Thank you.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Oh, boy, one of two remaining, so thank you for that. I, I'm going to be a little long tonight, and I apologize, but I want to say a few So please bear with me, all right? Some people have said that elections have consequences. I actually believe that elections have messages. There is a message for the winner, and there is a message for the loser. If you win, it means your message was on point. If you lost, you need to go back, redouble, refine your message, all right? I want to congratulate Clarence Ossabrooks for the council election. He was the highest vote getter at the elections. I personally believe that Clarence will be a very good council member, as I think he's very prepared. Also want to congratulate Ms. Buholic on getting re-elected. Crystal, I'm going to tell you that be steadfast in the way that you've been for the last two years, and it will serve you well. Keep representing the people and keep working hard on behalf of the citizens. Mayor Cohn, I want to congratulate you on your election. You were also the highest vote getter, too, in the mayoral race, but want to congratulate you. I've known you for quite some time, um, you've become a very close, personal friend of mine and somebody that I respect, but somebody that I know has the heart and the minds of the people in Indian Trail that will fight for them, um, so I do congratulate you on that. Want to also congratulate Mr. Barber on being re-elected. The easiest vote sitting up here is a no vote. That is the easiest vote that you can make. But when you vote, and before you vote, do some research, investigate, visit, drive, question, and be informed. Many things were said about the downtown plan, many of them were untrue, yet they had little impact because the truth is going to win, right? Politicians at their own peril, they always underestimate, or some of them always underestimate voters. This past election proved that. Voters are very smart, very intelligent people. They hold a collective power to choose who will govern them, and I salute and thank all voters. I, I want to bring up something that was very important to me, um, it's something that Mr. Cohn, when he was running and I first met him, you know, over at my house when he was campaigning, um, as I say at that time, I guess, pressing the flesh, getting out and meeting people. He talked about parks in Indian Trail because we only, I think we had the Crossed Paths, I think was the only one there, but he talked about parks. And Chestnut Square Park and Crooked Creek Parks are two of, you know, the best in Union County and probably, you know, down here in, in, in this part of, of the woods, right? Our town has wonderful parks. The voters actively approved bonds to build parks. We were promised, um, to build baseball fields, softball fields, and soccer fields over at Crooked Creek. However, there are issues with the land because it is in a floodplain, and to mitigate that would be too costly. There's currently $2 million that was left over. The way the voters, intelligent voters, structured the bonds was that they could owe the monies, could only be spent at Chestnut Square Park or Crooked Creek. Crooked Creek having the floodplain issue means we cannot spend it there, so therefore the next alternative is Chestnut. And that is why I voted and I encouraged the council, and it was unanimous at one point, but there's a little bit of a division, and that's apparent, but it was unanimous in terms of getting another field there because of the usage, but be also because of the service that Hayden and his group provide to the town. It's valuable, or I should say, it's invaluable. The people of Indian Trail do love it. So that, I say that to say that I am very, very happy with Indian Trail. I love living here. You cannot get me to move anywhere else right now except back to the Caribbean or the mountains as I always say that I'm from. But, um, our job as elected officials is to do things that benefit all citizens, not our friends or just a handful of people, not only one, you know, age group, but young, middle-aged people and seniors, right? So I just want to, I just wanted to point that out. I've been very fortunate and very blessed to have been able to sit up here, once when I was appointed, and the second time when I went to the voters, giving me that opportunity. I am grateful and I am humbled. This is not my seat, this belongs to the voters, and hopefully Clarence will be able to carry that forward. I want to also mention two of the things that I am very, I'm, I'm most proud of, two things that came up, was the Emerald Woods Water Project. Where I'm from, the country that I'm from originally, we have a lot of water. I grew up right next door to a river. Fresh water was not an issue, it was always available, and to see citizens within our area in Indian Trail not have access to that fresh water or clean water because of the arsenic in the wells and so on, that was a very big concern for me, and I was happy to be able to meet with them so that the council can appropriate funds to get these projects done. I am going to keep track of this council and the town to ensure that we do get this completed. You're probably not going to see me much at council comments, unless this thing does not get through, I'm going to come and let my voice be heard. So that's Emerald Woods and Moore Farms. The last thing I want to say to Mike, Brandy, Adam, Todd, Abby, Hayden, Trina, Jim, Bobby, Captain Hunky, to all of you, thank you for all that you've done for me, thank you for all that you continue to do for the town, I appreciate it, the voters appreciate it, the residents appreciate it, everybody appreciates it. And with that being said, happy Thanksgiving to all of you and your families. Thank you.
Mayor Cohn?
Thank you, Marcus. I'd just like to say, congratulations to Todd and Crystal, Clarence, congratulations, you guys worked hard, you know what it was like to go through this election, and I know you're, you're probably glad it's over. Uh, I just want to say, too, that I'm humbled by the support of the people of Indian Trail. You voted and supported myself, and I appreciate it, and I'll work even harder, or just as hard as I worked the last twelve years. I do love this town, and I'm here for the town, and, um, I hope we do, and we get a lot of progress. I want to work hard on getting this council to be a, a council that, that may not agree with each other all the time, but a council that, that knows that we all can support each other whether we agree with each other or not. We, we all need to have the, the town's best interest in what we do, and I believe that, that we do. I want to work towards the positive in, in what we're doing. I don't want to necessarily go and dig up the, the negative about what we can't do, I want to know what we can do, and we can do a lot, and I think we've done a lot. I think we've done a lot over the last couple of years, and with that being said, I'm very proud to be your mayor, and I will work very, very hard to be the best mayor of any town anywhere. And with that being said, I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Don't forget about Winterfest, come on out for the tree lighting, come out for the Christmas parade, and Mr. McIntyre, I hope this doesn't mean that you're not coming to the next meeting, because I think you need to come to the next meeting.
It, it depends, sir.
Well, it shouldn't depend, you should be here, and you should let the, the folks that want to show their support for you and, and show you that, that they appreciated you, and come out and, and, and say that. But with that being said, God bless everybody. Can I get a motion?
I'll, I'll give you that motion, sir. It, it's my pleasure. Motion, motion to adjourn.
All in favor, okay, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you.